Ladies and gentlemen, that is the magic hour of one o'clock. We will start the meeting with the Central Texas College District Board of Trustees for this, the 25th of May, 2021. Agenda, we'll start with the invocation unless Reverend Towers, if he will lead us in that, and I'll ask Mr. Bibby to lead us in pledge allegiance and ask Mr. Pierce leads in Texas pledge.
Run with me as I pray. Father, I'm grateful for your love and grace and mercy, benefits of life abundant and life eternal. And I'm grateful for the goodness that we have to be in this place and do the tasks that are said of me. Guide those in need, minister to those who are studying, learning, give those who are bringing forth the power of knowledge. Father, pray that you've got our hearts today that you operate out of sins, obedience to the rules, obedience to your plan, and bless us with our good lessons, others have great praise. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the United States. One state, under God, one indivisible.
We have a quorum present, and this meeting is being recorded, and members of the public may access the meeting on the TTC website. Item number two is Minister of Office for Board Members, L. W. Bibby, Page four, and Ms. Colley, Page three, elected to the thoughts of the Board of Trustees in the past election. That election has been certified, so Ms. Colley, Mr. Bibby will come forward to the podium.
I'm D. W. Bibby.
To solemnly swear.
Do I only swear?
I will faithful execute the duties.
How faithful we ask you to do this.
The Board of Trustees.
Trustee.
Central Texas College District.
Central Texas College District.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
With the best of my ability.
With the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Constitution of the laws of the United States.
Constitution of the United States of the United States.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
So that we got.
So long as you're there.
Board trustees, Mr. Colley. Item number three, an agenda, is the Secretary of the Board of Trustees conducts a nomination election for the office of Chair of the Board of Trustees. Secretary, Ms. Colley?
When I made a reminder for a call for nomination for the leadership of the board, when we did this restructure previously to the last swearing in, we said that we didn't think it was appropriate for chairmans to serve multiple terms or more than two terms without a breaking service. I didn't say anything because I was new and was just finding my way, but I believe that whoever serves in a leadership role, they're effective and capable of continuing in that role, should be allowed to do so. I know that if someday I wanted or had the desire to take a leadership role, the chairman position, I would expect to serve because I was confident, because I was capable of serving. So I just want, I didn't say anything before, but I do want another term like this to come up and me not express my views on that. I believe that if you're capable and you are leading in an appropriate manner, you should be allowed to serve indefinitely until you become incompetent or you decide that you no longer serve in that role. And having said that, now I'd like to ask if there are any nominations for chairman.
Ms. Colley, about what you just said, and I agree, I believe that we reveal that in the chairman or vice chairman.
I second it.
It's been nominated and seconded, motion been made and seconded, are there any, is there any discussion or any further nominations?
I would just like to say, I concur with what you and Mr. Towers were saying, actions speaks louder than words, and we see that in General Weaver.
General Weaver's a good guy, confident, has done a great job in lieu of the problems we had in the past years, so I support him wholeheartedly. However, I want to say that we do have a great number, I wouldn't say a great number, not any of them here, but we have several that are outstanding leaders, and so I think we ought to call upon General Weaver and support him, but we have others who are quite capable.
Any other nominations? Are call others? All those in favor, General Weaver, who's standing as chairman of this board, raise your hands. Chairman, have a quick, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Colley. I'm humbled and accept the position, even though my philosophy is it should be rotated, but I understand that in this special circumstance with the COVIDs and everything else we've had, it might be best just to keep our officers as they are and everybody roll with the punches on what we're going to have to do, and there's some decisions that are going to have to be made very shortly. Mr. Libby's going to give us some information on the budget later on, and Chancellor, I've had several discussions about the problem we have with meeting the expectations of the staff and faculty, our workers here, and we're going to have to see what we can do to make some changes. We can't afford to lose the employees that we have because we're not paying enough to keep them from jumping ship and going to other places, and that's a problem that we're having. Hopefully, with the state of Texas deciding not to renew the $300 a week COVID payments to people, that'll put some more people back in the workforce, but we don't know how that's going to pan out yet, so keep those items in mind as we proceed with this next year. Item number four is the Chair of the Board of Trustees conducts a nomination election for the Office of Vice Chair, Secretary and Treasurer of the Board of Trustees. I will take nominations for Vice Chair.
I'd like to nominate Reverend Towers, who is outstanding, supporter of this institution, has a good leader, outstanding leader for us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations? The nominations are closed. We'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Reverend Towers to be Vice Chair for the next two years, say aye.
Aye.
Next item is to nominate a secretary. Any nominations for secretary? Ms. Armstrong?
A good friend and outstanding leader, I would like to nominate this, Colley.
Is there a second on that?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, are there any other nominations? Seeing none, all those in favor of Ms. Colley, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and that leads us to the nomination for Treasurer, are there any nominations for the Office of Treasurer? Mr. Armstrong?
Mr. Hollinger has a great background in finances outside of this college, but I bet you he's an excellent, capable person to fulfill that job in this couple of months and years that we have to engage our problem with finances. So I nominate Mr. Hollinger.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm very flattered to be considered, and I'm sure we'll probably do something like that in the future. My plate is awfully full at this point, so I'd like to nominate Mr. Bibby.
Okay, is there a second for nomination, Mr. Bibby?
Second.
Nomination seconded. Any discussion on that motion? In the order of nominations, all those in favor of Mr. Hollinger, say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor of Mr. Bibby, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Bibby, you're the Treasurer.
Thank you.
You're going to get a raise.
And I'll still come out here and sign checks on wages.
That's the deal.
I'll look for your name on there, and I couldn't find it. Okay, consider approval of minutes of the regular meeting in Board of Trustees, held on April 27, 2001. That information's in your read ahead packet. Are any corrections or substitutions on the minutes?
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to approve, any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number six is the Chairman's Update, and an opportunity for members of the public to suggest additional topics for discussion or address topics of interest, with a presentation limited to three minutes. Is anyone present, would like to address the board? Seeing none, then we'll move on. Item number seven is the Chancellor's Report. Mr. Anopoulos.
Thank you, General Weaver. We have a number of items to cover, and we'll begin with Dr. Carter, the Governor's Executive
Good afternoon. Last week during the workshop on May 18th, I gave you an update on our response to COVID and our reopening plan. At that very moment, though, the governor was issuing an executive order prohibiting governmental entities from requiring masks at their locations, and so that significantly impacted us in that much of our reopening plan was contingent upon being able to require folks to wear masks. So having said that, what we've done is in evaluating the six-phase reopening plan itself, we will continue with that. We will not extend Phase Five beyond August 23rd, which is when Phase Six begins. We will continue with our face-to-face classes for the summer and the fall. We will continue with the reopening of services for our students, so we are not pulling back on any of those plans. What the removal of the mask does, though, the mask requirement, is that it impacts how we reopen the campus, our return to campus. So what we're currently doing is reevaluating the health and safety protocols, as well as the workplace environment and our facilities cleaning. So I can assure you that there is no, there is no plan to change the course, it's just how we respond now. And so what we are doing is working with Mr. Harmson on the continued cleaning and disinfecting protocols, with Ms. Jordan on the reporting requirements for employees. And just so that you know, the day after the order was issued, we had a positive, a positive case here on campus. We had an individual who was actually conducting a orientation, so there were multiple people present, and then the very next day, we had another positive case. So the order was issued on the 18th, and on the 19th, we had a case, on the 20th, we had a case, after two weeks of no cases. So that lets us know, and it's a reminder, that we are still in a pandemic. Much of our, much of the changes to the return to campus plan will focus on the fact that you will have people who are fully vaccinated, who still wear masks, who don't wear masks, people who are not vaccinated, who choose to wear masks, who don't, who decide not to wear masks. So those are all the contingencies that we think about in putting these, these plans together and keeping the campus community safe. We will not implement any procedures or guidelines that could potentially put our staff, particularly our campus police, our faculty, in a contentious or confrontational situation with people, and we are not going to necessarily try to govern what they do. We're going to focus on the things that we can control, the things that we can manage, and those things that we can't, we're not going to worry about them too much. People will take personal responsibility for themselves. Any questions?
I'd like to thank Dr. Carter and her team, and please realize, this is not done, these decisions aren't made in isolation, she just doesn't make these by herself, the other deputies and myself, and there's some, some of the director reports who are involved in these, in this decision-making, so it's not done lightly, so, and not in isolation, so thank you, Dr. Carter.
No, sir. Thank you.
I just want to make a comment.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just grateful that we're not going to make our instructors mask police, where they have to confront the students, because that puts an adversarial air to that relationship for the entire time that that student is in the class. So I'm just grateful that that's not going to be an issue for us.
And that was, and that was entered into the discussions, part of the decision-making process, so thank you. Dr. Garrett, Texas Transfer Advisory Committee member, announcement?
Good afternoon. A couple of months ago, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board called for nominations for the T-TAC Committee, the Texas Transfer Advisory Committee, which will establish the framework for a better method of students to transfer from a community college to a university, as well as develop the rules that all of us need to abide by, both the community college and the universities. This transfer committee is made up of representatives from community colleges as well as universities, but there was one student representative selected from the entire state of Texas, and you're looking at her right here, Anne Franklin. She was selected from Central Texas College. Now, Anne is a little different from many of our students, she is co-enrolled, she is also enrolled in A&amp;M Central Texas. So by them selecting Anne, they selected somebody that can represent both community colleges and universities, so they got a full package with her. She's studying computer information sciences, and we are so happy that she will be representing Central Texas College, as well as students across the state, but mostly CTC, at this transfer advisory committee. So thank you very much, Anne, for everything, and I look forward to watching her in action.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne, and thank you, Dr. Garrett. I'd let you know, Dr., we don't get these appointments lightly, and it's due to the diligence, due diligence of Dr. Garrett and Dr. Adie, who served on a lot of those committees, and Dr. Carter down with the coordinating board, but primarily Dr. Garrett's relationships with those folks and the things that she's done away from here, as well as here, that get us these appointments for our faculty, staff, and students to serve on those committees, so thank you. Dr. Adie, graphic design contest winner, and then you have another one, so.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. Actually, you will see the picture a little bit further down in the, in the program here, but we have an artist, her name is Kiki Kelly, and she is a young student here. When I say young, I guess, young for me, but she's a young lady who's a student here at CTC, and she won multiple awards. She won the first place in drawing category, and you will see her picture when we actually get to the slides, it's called Traces of Time, and you can see the detail in the work that she did. She also won first place in the paint, for her painting, so she did drawing and painting, and second place in painting. So the one, the painting that's called Facebook, that she won second place for, was selected to be in the Byways brochure that we publish here at CTC, so I think all of you will see that. Also, she pre-recorded a video of her work in, in which she showed her video-making talent, so very, very interesting lady and very talented, so in a few minutes, you will see her picture, and you can see what she looks like and what the painting Traces of Time looks like. And the next item, I would like to ask for Dean Anderson to bring the new two department chairs over here, so we can introduce them to you. Both of them are already faculty and have been faculty here, Mr. Kirchner in Industrial Technology in the Diesel Program, and...
Y'all step forward, come on up, up by Dr. Adie.
Maria, you were, you were in the Child Development Program, so Dean Anderson, can you please introduce the new department chairs?
Sure. So it's my pleasure to introduce our two new department chairs. Maria Lewis, she has been an adjunct faculty member in the Child Development Department for 13 years. She has been kind of shadowing the chair and learning all about the Child Development Center, and so she has a lot of experience, she actually had a grant that she went across the United States and evaluated childcare centers, so she, she's seen all, all kinds of things that, that she brings to the table that'll be useful for us. You want to say something?
Very honored to take this position, and just wanted to let you know that I am a native Kaliite, been here, born here, so my husband married me and took me away with the military and brought me home, so I'm very glad to be here. Thank you.
And William Kirchner, he goes by Bill, he has worked here for 18 years in the Industrial Tech Department. He is the lead, or was the lead, well, and still is the lead, instructor for the Diesel Program. He has brought that department up to being number 25 in the nation in the Daimler Trucking, yeah, Trucking Program. So when Ronnie retired at the end of March, he's been filling in as the interim chair and just doing a great job.
Thank you very much, it's an honor to be able to hold this position, and I'll do whatever I can to make the industrial technology and CTC better than what it already is. Thank you very much.
Thank you both. Now for our photographs, I think, Dr. Adie, you're up first, so Fort Knox sitting there.
Yes, so the, the first picture you see is our, of our first dual-credit student outside here of this area, so this student is at Fort Knox, his name is Colton Easton, and we have an agreement with the Fort Knox Middle High School to be teaching dual-credit courses there. So this is supposed to start in the fall, however, Colton brought two, two friends with him, and they are both taking summer cours, or all three of them are taking summer courses at CTC, and then in the fall, at Fort Knox Middle High School, we will be offering English and math for the students. So we're very excited to be offering dual-credit courses outside of the, here locally in the service area.
I can tell you, we're the only college in the United States that's doing that. We're the only one, so hats off to Dr. Adie and her faculty for making that happen, and so that's important to us.
Well, I have to admit, these conversations about the program have been going on for several years, so I can tell you, in prior visits, the ESO was very supportive of it, and, and you know, it had to, all things had to line up right, but now we're there, so we're very excited. And, and this is a great way to see for the other continental sites how it works, and to keep our eye on it and see maybe we can expand to other locations as well.
Yeah, so that means we're competing with the local, with the local colleges that are in the area, so congratulations.
The second picture, you see the two recipients of the scholarships, and the Chancellor has scholarships that he gives out every year, and it's for 12 semester hours. Students can either take the courses here in the fall, or in the spring, or split them up, and so you see the two students on the left, Peyton McFall, and on the right, Alejandra Ibarra Arona. And so those are the two students that were selected by the Boys and Girls Club, and every year, they provide us with the name of a boy and a girl, and so they did it this year, and I had the pleasure of awarding them the certificates. They came with their families, this was just a couple of weeks ago, they were there with their families to receive them, and they were very, very excited to start here at CTC. All right, in the middle, you see Ms. Veronica King, she is the Assistant Chair and also the Professor in Nursing for our Department of Health Sciences. And so on the left is Tammy Samaripa, on the right, Dr. Ann Marine Singh, and what you see here in the middle, what she's holding in her hand is the Daisy Award. So Ms. Veronica King received this award, and it's based on nominations from students and peers. The award is presented to nursing instructors whose expertise and excellence are demonstrated in their role as teachers. So congratulations to Ms. Veronica King. We had students from our Associate's Degree in Nursing that came to a pinning ceremony, so not all of the graduates participated, but we wanted to make sure that they had a special moment of recognition. And so you see here that Ms. King is actually the one pinning the soon-to-be nurse, Binto Moriba. So students drove up, they did it right here, you probably see it at the duck pond, and thankfully, we had nice weather out, it was about 80 degrees, and so it was a really nice setting. So students drove up, they could come with their spouse and kids, so usually, they came with maybe two or three people, they came up, they were pinned, a couple of pictures were taken, and then they walked back to their car, so it was sort of a, a drive-up, drive, not drive-through, but probably a drive-up pinning, so it was really, really special for those students, and I know that the, our campus police did a terrific job. They, they kind of lined up the cars, and then when it was ready for the next batch of students to come and drive up, they organized that, and so, again, very special moment for those students and for us, of course, as well. All right, this is the young lady I was telling you about, Kiki Kelly, and the picture that you see there is Traces of Time. She award, she, she earned first place in the drawing category, so when you look at the picture, you see all the detail in there, and also, again, it wasn't only in drawing, she also received awards for paintings as well, and also, she is the young lady who submitted a picture for NiSOT. So NiSOT is an organization that provides training and virtual and in-person training for our faculty and for staff as well, and so they asked for students to submit pictures for the contest, for, for their program, and so the way it trickled down, it went from me to Dean Anderson, Dean Anderson then shared it with the faculty, faculty put it out to the students, and voila, our student was selected, her entry was selected for, for that, and she also received a monetary reward for it. And I think next is Dr. Garrett.
Yeah, well, Dr. Adie's leaving, I want to go, just for a minute, go back to the, you don't have to do the photograph, but back to the Fort Knox, she, she and her team didn't do that all by themselves, they, Dr. Carter and her team for contracting and budgets, and Dr. Garrett for accreditation, they were all involved in that effort to get that program approved at Fort Knox, so we could do the dual-credit courses, so thank all of you for that.
Thank you. Before I talk about the graduation, I want to go back to the, the previous one about Byways. That's, that's organized by the library, and in May, the library celebrated the
And in May, the library celebrated the 2021 Byways Journal of Arts and Literature with about 20 finalists. And in, you saw the, the drawing one, but they had finalists in digital work, poetry, metalwork, things like that. And interesting, it's not just central campus. A Fort Sill student won first place for short story writing and was published in Byways. So I thought I'd give you a little bit more information about the Byways, what it is. Graduation, we talked a lot about that at the workshop and how exciting it was with the two graduations, and the amount of students and everything, that the breakdown of ECHS versus regular students. And, and we're just, we're just still so thrilled with our graduation that we wanted to put more pictures up here. The, the picture over on that side is of our highest honor graduates from the AM graduation, the 11:00 AM graduation. And I think, one, two, I think four of them were ECHS, and one is a regular CTC student. And of course, the other picture is, is of one of our graduates and how excited they are. Look at that. I mean, you can't, you can't, you can't beat that when you have somebody walk across the stage that way. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Thank you, everyone, for that. And General Weaver, that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. Item number eight is discussed and considered approval of the April 2021 interim financial statement and investment report. Mr. Liberty.
Yes, sir. You should all have a copy of the financial statements. If you, if you look at the first page and look down to a few lines from the bottom, you can see, you know, when I first ran the numbers, I looked at them and said, Bob, you got the same numbers in both columns, because they are so close to one another. I've never seen them this close from one year comparing to the next. We're looking at $270 difference in the bottom line between the two years. Kind of anomaly, that doesn't happen very often. But, but what makes that important, if you look at the next page, you can see, I'll help you, but if you look at the first subset there, and the subtotal for total operating revenue, and then farther down, there's more revenue, our revenue is down $5.6 million compared to last year. So it's pretty amazing, when I shared with you, that we were only $300 difference from last year's bottom line, but we're down $5.6 million in total revenue. That's because of all the fiscal controls and fiscal limitations that we put in place to keep that position where it is. We've done that for the last several years, as you're well aware. We've kinda been on a budget tightening system for the last three or four years. We're hoping that that will, those days are behind us. We need to get through the end of this fiscal year, see where we are. We need to see enrollments start turning around. We're not there yet, but the hopes are that we will continue to get there. I just wanna thank, once again, everybody that works here for all they've done to help us continue to stay positive in the bottom line with these reduced revenues. We couldn't do it without everybody pulling back and, and holding on and making that piece of equipment work one more semester. And, and we appreciate that. I do wanna remind everybody, especially for some of you that are newer on the board, even though we don't have any brand-new board members, the summer is tough. You know, we continue to have the full expenses that we have, and expenses will actually go up. Thank you to the Texas heat, when it finally shows up, you know it's coming. So expenses will be higher than normal, and revenue falls, because you don't get near the enrollments in the summer that you do. So it'll be tough to keep this bottom line where it is, but we think we, we should be able to sustain a, a positive bottom line. And if anybody has any questions?
Any question, Mr. Liberty? And I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number nine is discussed and considered approval of annual contract renewal with Endata Tel Incorporated for My Compass in the amount of $67,500. Dr. Welch.
Good afternoon. This is to request consideration to approve the annual contract renewal with Endai Incorporated for its My Compass system in the amount of $67,500. That's the S software application that allows us to help advise our servicemember and veterans in the field through unofficial evaluation, and plus, the servicemen and veterans can actually upload their JST and receive an estimate of the CTC college credits that will apply toward a degree. So it's a very worthwhile product, and also does meet some of the requirements of the DOD MOU as well. Any questions?
Questions, Dr. Welch? Now I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion made and seconded to approve the award of the contract. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 10 is discussed and considered approval of an award, a contract to Lot and Vernon and Company, P.C. in the amount of $71,500 for audit services for the period of September 1st, 2021, through August 31st, 2022, with a four-one-year option periods. Mr. Liberty.
Yes, sir. As discussed last week at the workshop, we reviewed the bid that came in from Lot Vernon. They made all the requirements, and the recommendation from the administration is to accept this contract.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 11 is discussed and considered approval to award a contract to Bingham, Cleaver, Chapman, and Watts for commercial property insurance with a proposed premium of $250,654 for a period of July 1st, 2021, through June 30th, 2022, with four one-year option periods. Mr. Hickman.
Yes, sir. As we discussed at last week's board workshop, this is for our property insurance only. And this is a new contract, and the recommendation from the administration is that, that we approve this. We feel that this one is in the best interest of the college.
Any questions, Mr. Hickman? Now I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the award of the contract. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 12 is discussed and considered approval of the funds to transfer from reserves in the amount of $538,000 to be used on the current fiscal year Americans Disability Act expenses. Mr. Harmson.
Good afternoon. As we discussed at the board workshop, the current ADA project is going to require us to transfer some funds to cover the anticipated fiscal year, this current fiscal year ADA expenses. With that, recommend, the recommendation is the approval of the transfer of reserves in the amount of $538,000. And I, and there is a breakdown, I think, in the packet information as to where those dollars would go.
Any question, Mr. Harmson? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
Second.
A motion been made and seconded to approve the award, I mean, the transfer, you know, the funds out of the reserves. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 13 is discussed approval for a job contract with Jamal and Smith for the Americans Disability Act Accessibility Project in not, not to exceed $2.1 million over the duration of the project, and I believe that's through your project.
Correct. Yeah, so as we talked about during the board workshop, we were gonna look at utilizing two contractors. Joel's Flooring was one that was previously approved in April. The, this one is with Jamal and Smith Construction. The project is, at least for Jamal and Smith, will not exceed $700,000 or 2.1 over the duration of the project. So the administration recommends approval of Jamal and Smith for job order contracting services for the ADA project.
Any question, Mr. Harmson? Now I'll entertain a motion.
No move.
Is there a second? Motion been made and seconded to approve the award of the contract on the Americans Disability Act Accessibility Project. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 14 is recommend any topics for upcoming agendas, items or announcements by board members. Start with Mr. Armstrong.
Oh, thank you, sir.
No, thank you.
Not an item to talk about, but just congratulations to the chancellor for receiving an award, a buckle from the rodeo committee for your service.
A rodeo?
I don't have it on, sir. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
My question is, when are you gonna start the parrotback riding? Mr. Beebe?
I'd just like to say congratulations to the lady on the left and the young man here on the right under reelection to the board of trustees.
Here, here. Announcement and time of the location for the board workshop, scheduled for June 15th, 2021, and the regular meeting scheduled for Tuesday, June 22nd, 2021. And it will be here, and I'm assuming we will still be in this configuration unless something else changes. If there's nothing else for the good of the college, we stand adjourned.